Hello, everybody. Welcome. I called this meeting at the Prosper Independent School District to order. Let the record show that a quorum of board members is present, that this meeting has been duly called, and that notice of this meeting has been posted in accordance with the Texas Open Meetings Act, Texas Government Code, Chapter 551. I'd like to entertain a motion for us to go into executive session.
Make a motion.
Thank you, Mr. Beavers. A second?
Second.
Thank you, Jana. All in favor? All right, we shall return. Thank you. It's mysterious. Yeah, maybe that's it. You said that. Well, we've already called the meeting to order. Meeting started at 6:00, and we went into executive session. We are now coming out of executive session. And so I will begin this meeting with an invocation. Let me, let's pray together. Dear Lord, we thank you for the opportunity to come together. We thank you for the opportunity that you have given us as a board to work in this fine community. Father, we thank you for the children that you've put under our care, for the staff and the teachers, the administrators that are in Prosper ISD. Father, we know that your hand of blessing has been upon this district for many, many years, and we're grateful for that. Father, I pray that you would continue to bless this district, keep our children safe. Father, I pray that they would be strengthened emotionally, intellectually. Father, they would graduate from this place with as well-rounded, wonderful citizens, ready to make their mark in this world. Father, we know that all that we see and know is from your hand, and we're glad for the blessings, grateful for the blessings that you've given us. We're grateful for the role that you've given us as a school board. We ask that you give us wisdom and discernment tonight as we discuss the matters that are before us, that you guide us in the months and years to come, and that you guide every administrator, every teacher, and every staff member in this great district as we care for these wonderful kids. We thank you for all that you've done for us. We thank you again for this opportunity tonight, and we pray all this in your son's name. Amen.
Praise for the pledge, please. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, united, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Okay, thank you, everyone.
I think we want to start with our presentations tonight. So we would like all of our Eagle Scouts that are with us this evening, make your way up to the front row.
Look at that.
And we'd love to have you join us. We're very proud of each of you because we know the hard work and dedication that you've put in over the years. I know that some of our board members, as well as some of our staff, have sat on your boards for your final review, and that was quite an honor to be able to hear all of the things that you've done, acquired the dedication and the time that you've put in. But I also want to thank the parents because that was very prominent in the conversations I know that I was involved in of things like, I don't know if I would have gotten through this had it not been for my mom or for my dad. So just again, how very important our parents are in really fostering and facilitating and bringing up great young men. And I know that this is a very high honor for you. Not many acquire it. So I want you to just briefly tell us your name, what high school you go to, and then what your final project was, so the crowd knows. So Marcelo, we'll start with you.
My name is Marcelo Mejia. I go to Prosper High School, and my Eagle Scout project was distributing first aid kits to elementary schools around Prosper.
Hi there. My name's Ethan Graffinino. I go to Prosper High School, too, and my Eagle Scout project was building a bridge over a muddy ditch in the Whispering Farms community, so differently-able people would be able to fish there.
My name is Nick Lebruska. I also go to Prosper High School. My Eagle project was helping a nonprofit.
My name is Owen Cranfield. I go to Prosper High School, and I created storage cabinets for the steel van at Prosper High School.
All things to make the world a better place. We truly appreciate that. I know we'll be honoring you at graduation as well. And you have a few other people who alongside you who are also Eagle Scouts. We really want to make this a tradition in Prosper ISD that we're honoring our Eagle Scouts because this is a ton of dedication, and it really makes us just better as students and as a school district in whole because of your leadership. So we want to make sure that we're highlighting that and really honoring year after year our Eagle Scouts. I know that your scout leader is with you. I think I saw him. Is there anything you'd like to say, Vince?
I'm just very proud of these men and all the ones I've actually worked with here on these lines. They've done tremendous job, not only for their Eagle Scouts, service hours that they've put in, but all of the work that they've done. It's very proud of them.
Thank you, and thanks for your leadership. We truly appreciate it. Hold that. Now hang on for just a minute for a picture, please. And we also want to make sure that we are honoring our Girl Scouts for the Gold Star Award, and I know that we have, I know Jasmine was with us tonight. Okay, and we have Alex also, one up. We also want to make it a tradition that our Girl Scouts are coming to the forefront so that we're seeing both settings. Was hoping you were going to bring cookies, but obviously not. These are my favorites. So tell us, how do you acquire this high honor? Because I know that it's very similar to the Boy Scouts, a lot of dedication, a lot of leadership, a lot of time and discipline. So tell us about your journey.
So my name is Jasmine. I go to Prosper High School. I put 105 hours into my project. I created care packages for the special needs community here in Prosper ISD that included like personal items, diapers, wipes, sensory toys, anything, you name it, for the special needs classrooms at Folsom Elementary in Prosper ISD.
Excellent. So not just cookies.
No. Yeah.
Hi, I'm Alex Vincent. For my gold award, I worked with Prosper ISD as well as Children's Health to kind of spread awareness for stress and anxiety amongst teens, to kind of help reduce that stigma surrounding it. And also on top of that, I was honored as one of the Young Women of Distinction this year for my gold award, which is another amazing opportunity that I got from it. So it's been such an honor to not only get my gold award, but also serve a larger community as a whole.
Excellent. We're very proud of both of you young ladies. I have an award for you. So get your picture, and we'll be honoring them at graduation as well. One, or three. And next up, this is a very special award that we have typically a life-saving award. You see that, the fire, police, military setting, but we have a young lady in our very own school district, Ella Grace. Where are you? If you'll come forward, I know you're here. Ella Grace Clark is a hero. Ella, she's really excited about coming up here, but I'm very proud of her. So Ella's father experienced a stroke. Ella was in the car with him, and Ella turned the car off and called 911 and saved his life. Amazing, right, to have your own father who you love dearly in this moment, and being able to have the courage and the strength to be able to make a life-saving moment happen. So I'm so super proud of you. We have a special life-saving award for you, and we want to honor you with that. Very proud of you. So very exciting thing, and I know that Dad's here tonight. We're so glad that you're here, Mr. Clark, and of course, you're the best. Sorry, I'm trying to remember all the words. We have a lot of things to honor tonight. So it is retirement season in Prosper ISD, and that's kind of a sad thing because when I look back over the amount of years that have been spent by these individuals, it's the foundation of where our district is. And I see people that I worked with years and years ago when I was first in Prosper in the late 90s, and now they're making their exit. And it's, it's a little hard, and it's a little sad because you know that people who committed and stayed strong even when they could have left, they stayed because they had staying power. And that's something that we're not seeing with the younger generation in any workforce, not just schools. And so this is truly a night to honor their dedication, their loyalty to Prosper ISD because we are where we are because of them staying and their staying power and not going when the going got tough, because it might have gotten tough a few times. We've seen a few people on the front. So we have a total of 324 years in education, 174 of those years in Prosper ISD. This may be the last time you see that on a screen, so if you want to take a picture of it, you might want to grab it because that might be, there's a new trend that's happening in our world of education. So we'd like to have, if you'll go in and come up, we have an award for you. And you're going to stay with us for just a minute, okay? Next one. Okay. That's one more. This one is green. Mr. Pond. There's coincidence there? Yes. You're talking about the opposite. She's really strong because she made it through. It's impressive. Yeah, she's sick. Definitely a lasting legacy, and again, I want to thank you so much for everything that you've done for Prosper ISD, including good, the bad, and the ugly. Some of you have been here 20-plus years, and staying in the same place is an absolute gift. And I want you to know that that is a gift that is not gone without notice and without care, because I know the amount of people you have mentored, whether it's students or it's staff members, caring in the parents to help them in their darkest hour and their darkest moment, to help them see the way. I cannot thank you enough. And I know the Prosper ISD school board is right behind me, and I thank them. So please, I think they deserve staying. They're doing. Smiling inside because there are a lot of lonely women. Six and a half, four and eight. That's the real reality, but we do thank you so much for everything that you've done. We would love to have you stay with us for the rest of the board, because I know we would love to do that, but you're more than welcome to make your exit, and we'd like to watch you stand still. And smile pretty. Yes.
Yeah, so those of you that want to leave, that's fine. We're not going to hold it against you. There's a lot of exciting budget stuff to talk about tonight, but I understand. Lots of chairs available.
I'd like to ask Mr. Dustin Toth, the principal of Rockwell High School, to come forward. We're also going to be honoring him tonight. This is such a special honor. Those of you who are familiar, there's an organization in the state of Texas that supports public education, all things public education. Charles Buntz may be someone you're more familiar with, the owner of HEB Stores, which are down in kind of this southern, central part of Texas, they're down in the Everway and Chrisston. So he actually has a fellowship where he pours in money and resources into public education. He specifically wants, I mean, is kind of born into his principles because he understands that leaders are a significant key factor in success for the campus. And so they put out applications every single year, and so I encourage everybody to put in. Not always are they selected. And so Mr. Toth was excited to let me know that he made it to round two on his group plan, which again, he made difference, he don't turn it out. But we're very excited to let everyone know that he's been selected for the Harvard Institute, so he will be fully picked to Boston through Raise Your Hands Texas, and he will attend a week-long course of evolving vision, I think is the one. They have thousands of different institutes that they do during that term, and you have some professors, which we all know that Harvard is the M L B Y O. So just having that experience of being able to go to Boston and really begin that spending and learning, along with five or eight years there, only with the University of the State and Texas, but across the nation, as well as across the world. He will be sitting with investors from the Netherlands, or he will be with people from Australia who are running schools in those parts of the country. And so it's a great experience, and the things he runs there, he will be able to bring those back, share with our leadership team, and also be able to make the school even better. And we know that he'll strangle it, and he's even going to be like even better.
That's right.
Right? So we're very proud of you, and congratulations. We're glad that Prosper's going to make its name in Austin because of you. So congratulations, Mr. Toth. Now he's going to start telling us he got a degree. It's just five days. Dr. Toth. So I know that we talked about Mr. Clark and the accident, and Ella Grace being a lifesaver, hero, but I did want to bring it up because I think it's very timely considering the life-saving award that may as National Stroke Awareness Month. And so many times this hits individuals, and they just don't pay attention to the warning signs, but we need to pay attention to the warning signs because it can be really the change of someone being with us or not being with us. So just wanted to highlight that. And again, Ella Grace, way to go. And it is National EMS Week, which makes it even more prominent for us because our EMS personnel were in on the call with Mr. Clark to make sure that he got the care that he needed to get him to the next place so that he had his best opportunity. And then our National Police Week, I know that we have Chief Vessels here. I didn't see any of our other officers, but we certainly want to honor each of you. Mr. Wolverton, back there in the corner. Our officers do a phenomenal job of just really taking such great care of our students, our staff, our parents and community, and so we certainly want to honor each of you, and thank you so much for everything that you do. We know the, the work you do behind the scenes, we don't always get to see all of the things that you're doing, but we know you deal with a lot of things, and you do it and take it in stride. So thank you. Okay, Mr. Shirley. Oh, go ahead.
No, 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 wait. Go away.
Okay. He's going to have a presentation on college career and military readiness report. This is a requirement by the Texas Education Agency.
Yeah, so this is just the annual update of the college career military readiness, also known as CCMR. In math, the Texas Higher Education Coordinating Board developed a 60-by-30 TX plan, which is by 2030 that 60% of Texans from the ages of 25 to 34 will have some sort of certification or a college degree. The Texas, the School Finance Commission recommended for school districts that there are two checkpoints to make sure that we're in compliance with the 60-by-30, and that is through our CCMR scores in the early childhood literacy and math. Through House Bill III and the 86 legislature, they developed, requiring us to develop five-year goals, which we passed last year, and provide this annual update, which is what I'm providing you today. So let's dig into the CCMR. And just so you're aware, a part of the school's accountability, all high schools, about 40% of their accountability score comes from the CCMR score. So how are students showing that they're college-ready? So there's five indicators there. They have to meet the Texas Success Initiative, the TSI, in reading and math, so they can pass the TSI assessment, SAT, ACT, or complete a college prep course. They could also earn a three or higher on an AP exam or a four-plus on the IB. Students can also complete a dual credit, three hours in English or math, or nine hours in any other subjects. They could also earn an associate's degree or complete the Onramps Dual Credit Course. We don't offer that, but we have plenty of other opportunities to students to show that they're ready for college. The career in military readiness, students can earn a certificate through the industry-based certifications, and we offer numerous opportunities for students to get involved in those through our CTE programs at the high schools. They could earn a Level One or Level Two certificate. They could enlist in the Army, I'm sorry, the Armed Forces. That's currently suspended right now because the communication and connection with the military, they're communicating back to us that actually one of our students did enroll in one of the branches. There's a little bit of a breakdown there, so they're working on cleaning up that reporting. For our special education students, they could graduate with an IP in workforce readiness or graduate with an advanced degree plan and be identified as a special education student. So the goals that were developed were to increase the number of graduates that have achieved the CCMR from 82.5% to 88. What you can see there is just a slow increase to make sure that we are, you know, doing our part to get to that 60%. If you take a look at the bottom, you'll see our scores from 2019. Those are actually the 2018 graduates. We were at 82.5% where our goal started. In comparison to the region and the state, we obviously perform at a much higher level than the districts in our region and throughout the state. But if you take a look at the 2021 score, you can see a dip there, and the dip there, obviously with COVID and the interruption to learning that was happening, was a piece of that. Also, the requirements that colleges have, they didn't always require you to take the SAT or ACT to be enrolled, and so those numbers dropped for us in regards to being able to get credit for those students that could show their college-ready. And this is the breakdown by student groups, the goals, what the actuals were. Most, all of the student groups dropped. However, the Asian student group, special education, and the emergent bilinguals, English-language learners, actually increased. And then below that is the targeted goals for each student group as well. So how are we going to get to that 88%? So these are the strategies that we're currently using to get there, and that's to increase the number of industry-based courses that we offer, certifications that students can take. We increased the AP courses and tests. Mr. Rutledge does a great job of monitoring that and ensuring that, that, those courses are increasing in enrollment. We offer for all of our juniors the SAT. They can take that at school. And then Mr. Rutledge also has done a great job of increasing the number of dual credit offerings that we have in our district. And then we also are just increasing the real-time monitor, and we have a program called Edigence that can help us track this information. We're working with our Skyward team to ensure that we're looking at current information because, you know, what use is this information a year or two years from now? We can do something about it with, in real time.
Mr. Shirley, do you mind going back one?
Yes.
I have a question on, on this one. So if we're, the goal is to get from 82.5% to 88%, and now the actual, I guess, is more of a 75%, 75.5%. So I guess the new goal is to get from 75.5% to 88% by 20, by 2024.
Yes, sir.
Is there a need, or is it possible to adjust our goals, or do we believe that we're going to still meet our target of the 88%?
My recommendation would be to leave the goals as they're set, and let's revisit this a year from now when we get our, our scores in, just so that we have more accurate data. With students being in, in person for this entire year, I think we're going to see increases in these numbers. However, if, if the board wants to revisit the goals, we're, we're happy to, to adjust if needed.
Is that an option to revisit?
Yes, sir.
Okay. Thank you.
We have to yearly.
The other addition with the Army JOTC unit, once they start recording, students get credit for the military. I think that would increase our numbers as well. So the early childhood literacy and math.
On that previous slide, too, I want to give a shout out to the Prosper Education Foundation because they really stepped up to the plate with AP courses, dual credit, and then those industry-based certifications to do scholarships for kids that wanted to apply for those to help offset the cost, so that, that helps with being able to get access to them. So certainly don't want to miss that opportunity to let everyone know that they're helping out in that area also.
Okay, so the early childhood math goal, this is all based off third-grade star scores. And math was the biggest hit the last time that I presented the Tapper Report. Math was the biggest decline for us throughout the district. Our goal here is to get to the meets or above level. So meets is a higher standard. If you get, if a student scores in the approaches level, that means they passed. So this is the next level above approaches, it's meets. If they reach that, our goal is, is 65 to 80% is what we'd like to see all of our students at that meets level. If you take a look at the 2019, we scored 65%, again, much higher than the region and the state, but a significant drop. Again, much higher than the region and the state, but a significant drop, 44% last year.
And let me just say, we addressed that also in our campus improvement plans.
Yes.
Our math goals.
And then this is the student group data here, the goals, the actuals. Most, all of the student groups did see a decline in the scores. And I'm just, I'm really looking forward to the scores that we're going to be getting. Should have them by next Monday to see what increases that we've seen because I know our teachers have been working really hard. For the literacy piece, it's the third-grade readings. We're going to increase from 60 to 75%. Again, you can take a look at the bottom, 60% in 2019, 2021, 53%. Just a, a small decline there. And then again, here are the actuals, and I know that you've had this information and were able to preview it before the meeting. Declines as well in most, all student groups, and then the goals below it. So, what are we doing? How are we going to increase these scores? Well, obviously, great, we've got kids in the building that face-to-face instruction is always better than the virtual piece. But our teachers, kindergarten through first grade, had to participate in reading academies, which is professional development. Very extensive training that went on throughout the year. Shout out to those teachers that had to complete this. It was many, many hours to, to reach the, you know, the certificate for that. Our first through second grade, I'm sorry, our second through third grade teachers will take that professional development this next year. These are the assessments that we use on our kids to diagnose and, and, you know, get in there and do some early intervention through, all the way through pre-K to second, third, and, and honestly, beyond third grade as well. We're using the Edigence for the progress monitoring. And then the other thing is that we've increased our pre-K. We had three full-day pre-K programs last year and five half-day. This year, we have 18 full-day pre-K classes. And so, we're getting those kids in early and diagnosing any learning difficulties that may be happening and addressing those at, at an early age. And that is it, unless you have any questions.
Any questions from Mr. Shirley?
I have one question. This year with STAR, they did it on the computer, correct?
That's correct.
How hard is that for a student doing math that's used to writing stuff down, going from computer to paper? Are we going to see even a further decrease in scores until they get used to that?
I don't think so.
Are they able to practice?
Students are able to practice, and, and with the virtual that we've had in the past, students were taking tests online as well. I wouldn't say that it's, would be my number-one choice, but we don't have a choice anymore. All tests will be given online.
TEA, not us.
I would say, as, as much as we hate to see a dip at all during those COVID years, but a huge shout out to our district and our teachers that have kept our, our percentages higher than our surrounding districts in our region and state.
Good job. A lot of heavy lifting, for sure.
Absolutely, I know they'll be back on track soon.
Sorry, I got to get us caught up, that's all. Okay, May Enrollment, so we are at 22,684 students at this moment. So, continuing to enroll kids right here at the very end still.
Is that right?
Yes, and of course, registration for our new students as well as returning students is now open, so we'll continue to track those numbers throughout the summer to see where we are for enrollment with those that are returning to us. Okay. Board update on construction for Joyce Hall Elementary. They had a great meet and greet with Joyce Hall and a bunch of students who were going to Hall Elementary. Ms. Romero and Ms. Morris did a great job, and Ms. Trotter really set that up, so I know that that was a well-attended event. It sounds like 250 swag bags went out the window fast. So, yeah, highly sought-after items. Mr. Bridges' favorite song?
We got two more.
Okay. So, we have Walnut Grove High School, High School 3. We are ahead of schedule, but obviously, all of the shipping demands and all of that can continue to create little hiccups for us here and there, but we really appreciate all of the work that Pogue and their team are doing to make that building move along and get it ready. So, here's your next song. Okay, so this is the construction update. This is the first reveal of the Early Childhood Center. And so, we wanted to bring you a few pictures so that you can see what this new center looks like. Just as a reminder, we have 18 pre-K classrooms across all of Prosper ISD, 15 of those being housed at Reeves Elementary, which is taking up its own space in the building. So, you can obviously see why there is a need for an Early Childhood Center. Very excited, I know that Ms. Cannon and Ms. Coggan, they've been able to work and kind of give some feedback on what they're wanting to see in the design of this building to meet those developmental needs of our youngest learners, as well as Dr. Hickey. So, this is the inside area. You can see kind of a barn-type theme. One of the things, you can see the glass, which is actually, that's the play area for the kids, which I love that it's closed in so that they can play safely and the teachers and staff can watch them. So, you can see what that looks like in the actual courtyard. But it'll be neat for our parents that are visiting the building too, to be able to see the kids in play. We've got a trike path out there for the kiddos, which will be really fun for some of those fine motor and large motor skills that they're working on. This is one of the common areas, so we'll have kind of a pod setup, but this is what would actually serve as their cafeteria area. And then like if we're having presentations or maybe indoor recess, it's a larger space that they can all come together and play in this area, as well as it being a versatile setting for the cafeteria and then any kind of wet-type art projects that they're wanting to do as well. This is a hallway corridor area, so you can kind of get an idea of how wide and open it is, which we love. Okay, any questions about the Early Childhood Center? We'll be breaking ground on that in June, so pretty quick.
Very good. All right, now we come to public comment. We don't have anybody signed up for agenda-related items. We've got some comment on non-agenda-related items. That comes later in the agenda, but it's now time for the consent agenda.
Okay, we have the minutes from two special meetings, as well as a regular meeting that we had. Any questions about those minutes?
All right, entertain a motion to approve.
I'll make a motion to approve.
All right, thank you, Deb, second?
I'll second.
All right, thank you, Deana, all in favor?
Okay. Okay, so we have consideration and possible action on the selection of a K5 math adoption. We use STEMScopes currently as a resource. Please know, I know sometimes it's a little confusing because of the way that we went through education, that you go page by page, chapter by chapter. These are actual resources that we're pulling to enhance the curriculum. And so, it's K5 STEMScopes math, and that is in a partnership with Rice University and is aligned and approved by the Texas Education Agency.
Okay, sorry, I fell asleep, I was lost, lost my track, track of where I'm supposed to be. Is that it on that? Do we need to, any more discussion about that? All right, then I will entertain a motion for item number 9A. Thank you, Jana, second? Thank you, Kelly, all in favor? Great, sorry about that. Okay.
Okay, we have Mr. Doug Witt with us this evening from Samco. This is company, and he is a professor for Prosper ISD. Welcome, Mr. Witt.
Hello, Doug, how are you?
Good evening, good evening. They handed me the power control.
There you go.
If there's anyone in the room that shouldn't have it, it's me. So, let's see if I can get it to work. It's good to be back, appreciate, I just literally walked in the door from another meeting. There's a lot going on in Texas, and certainly, this is an epicenter of that growth. So, with that, we are having technical malfunctions already.
There we go, okay. All right, here we go. So, y'all have seen the bond buyers index of municipal bonds from us in the past. This is a national interest rate index. It comes out weekly. To the far right of the graph, you'll see an increase, pretty sharp. The average dating back to the bottom-left corner, January of 2001, at the bottom left. So, it's a modern history of interest rates. The average runs across the middle in blue at 4%. I think that number's 337. And then, of course, the record low occurred in 2020, post-pandemic. For a long period of time, we had Federal Reserve, federal government intervention in our markets. They found out that can't go on forever, and so they started unraveling that, and you see the rise in rates that are there. The next slide, I'll tell you a little bit about what we did when rates were that low. But before I get there, again, the average is at 4%, record low at 2%, the high in 2008, 6%, and again, we're below 4%. So, we're still below averages, but we are up some from the record-low levels. So, refunding bond history, I put this slide in here this time to just show that at times, when you see Vs in the market, some of your bonds become what we call ripe for refunding. There's a certain period that goes from the date of issuance until we can refund those bonds. When we can get to that point to refund bonds, we start taking advantages of the bottom Vs in those market, and you did that successfully and significantly on a couple of occasions, and in particular, the latest one in 2020. So, your refunding bond history, 2012, a small deal, 3.7 million of savings. 2014 was a big conversion from some outstanding type of bonds that we were able to convert to a different type of bond, and there was $15 million of savings there. Small refunding combined with some new money in 2014. 2015 was a second very large refunding, again at the V of the market for 2015. And then in 2020, when we blew through all record-low levels at that point to new record-low levels, you did an $86.5 million refunding for another $15 million of savings. So, the authorized but unissued bonds, this is an interesting chart because I leave in the 2007, I thought about taking it out. But you can see in 2008, you sold 87.5 million. And then you sold not again until 2014. So, you had to adapt to the circumstances that were presented to you. We're adapting today, as I'll go through the presentation, but we're going to the accelerated standpoint rather than the decelerated standpoint. So, in 2016, two years later, we started the ramp-up, 75 million, 125 million in '17, 200 million in '18, 200 million in '19, above the line with the '07. But right below it in 2019, you also sold another 100 million of the Billion III that the voters authorized in 2019. So, again, you ramped up to the point where 2019 was a big issuance, and then something occurred in 2020, and we all kind of looked around and said, "Okay, we've ramped up, and now what?" Well, it was a short period of time there, 2020, before we started back with a second installment in early 2021. So, if you combine all of those together, there's 200 million in late '19, early '20, or excuse me, '20, and then early '21, and then this time last year, 200 million. And we're here tonight to seek authorization from you to delegate the bond issuance to the administration for another 250 million. You have 932 million of authorized but unissued from the 2019 bond election. At the time, we were growing about a Billion III per year. So, my estimate was we would probably issue that Billion III over an eight-to-10-year period. Your prior superintendent told me that was going to take way too long, and we're going to be going a lot faster, and he appears to be more right for the reasons that I'll show you momentarily.
He loved that you just said that.
So, upcoming projects and timeframe, you just put one on the screen. When I look at this chart, there is a lot going on in this district. There are a lot of people in this room who are working tirelessly to construct and keep up and provide safety and open schools and logistics. And so, you're to be commended for all the hard work that you do. And I just look at this chart, and it's, it's staggering to see the amount of building that we're doing to keep up with growth in this community. So, the way it's blocked, Elementary 15, Middle School 5, and High School 3 began roughly January of 2021. Of course, 15 will open this summer. 5 and 3 are in the middle of construction. And then you go to the next block, 16 and 17 in the Early Childhood Center, all beginning in '22, finishing up somewhere around 2023. And then the other miscellaneous items, transportation, technology infrastructure, capital outlay, and land are round-number figures in there for some sort of expenditure in the '22, '23-type fiscal year. And then as you work your way down, number 18, number 6, and number 4, beginning in January of 2023. And so, as we work with your administration, the question is always, "We're going to commit to construction for these items that take two to three years. What is the outlook? What is the bond capacity?" and so forth. And that's the administrative meeting that we had. We then went before the Finance Committee to lay that out in detail. And we're here tonight for kind of the first of a three installment plan to finish these types of projects. Elementary number 19 is at the bottom, only because I have a rough number of January 2024 start date there. So, the historical stats, for those that like numbers, this chart is very important to us. The net taxable value in 2016, '17 was 4.9 billion. To put that in perspective, we're going to grow over 3 billion this year. And that's not a long time ago in 2016, '17, so six years ago roughly. In '21, '22, you had $12.9 billion of taxable value. And so, in '22, '23, the preliminary estimate is over 16 billion of tax base. Leading up to the five years, not including this year, but the five prior years, you were growing at a Billion 2 to a Billion 9. On, on average, about 1.6 billion per year. For those who like the simple version of our math, we were looking at about 100 million per billion dollars of growth. So, you can put that at 160 million type of... So, you can put that at 160 million type of annual issuance, although that grossly underestimates the challenges that go into building a bond model and the plans and so forth. So, then you look at the fourth bullet point on the page, 2022/23. Again, 3.26 billion of growth, or about 25%. This is on a preliminary estimate basis from the appraisal districts. But again, staggering, accelerated, massive growth that basically unleashes your ability to continue on and keep up building for what we now have the financial resources to undertake. INS fund balance at the bottom is in good shape. We're running around 23%. There's no significant plan of drawdown of that. There's no significant plan of increase of that, although each time we issue bonds and the annual budget goes up, we would like to see some incremental increases in that over time. I suspect with the conservatism of this year's budget, that you'll see at this time next year some increases in your INS fund balance. But no need to draw it down at this point, not with the growth that we're having. So, the summary of the Plan of Finance. Again, we're here tonight to seek authorization to issue 250 million here in August of 2022. We have a placeholder for 225 million and 200 million. There's no exact numbers there. I anticipate those changing between now and this time next year. But what it does illustrate in some of our financial planning models, that again, we've gone through with the staff and the Finance Committee, is we look more and more like a 200-plus-million-dollar issuer than a 150-million-dollar issuer. And then we try to tie that math in to keeping up with the construction process that you're undertaking on all of these projects. So, we are at 50 cents. We plan to stay at 50 cents. There is a technique that we utilize to pass the 50-cent test, not anticipating any major growth here, so it's a non-factor. We're going to pay our highest amount in 2022, '23, and then the payments will drop thereafter. Amortization length, 30 years, as always. 200 million, we are planning for the fixed-rate traditional. We're also going to plan to do 50 million of this in the adjustable rate mode. This is a flexibility tool for fast-growing districts. It allows us to borrow with shorter interest rates and yet pay back flexibility that we can accelerate or decelerate as we need to. You've utilized this once in the past. We passed on it in 2020, because we were selling 30-year fixed-rate bonds at 2.25%. So, there's no reason to have to borrow on the short rates when our long rates are that low. Now that we're getting a more normal curve, it's time to go back and utilize both tools for this district as a financing mechanism for your bond programs going forward. So, in order to take on all of these, we're still looking at continued growth. 2.5 billion for the next two years. Again, we have the ability with the 225 million and the 200 million to adjust accordingly this time next year. But the 250 million that we're asking for tonight is in good shape.
We can ask Mr. Bristol if those numbers, if we can be able to pull these numbers off? Mr. Mayor?
Thank you to the town for allowing us, Marcus, as well, allowing us to see this kind of growth. It's fabulous. So, here is our chart that kind of puts the picture. The light green and light blue are the 200 million fixed rate and 50 million adjustable rate. So, that's what we're looking at issuing now. You'll see a step up from the dark blue or black number in '22 up to around an $80 million principal and interest budget in '22/23. And then with the continuation of yellow and orange, which is the 225 million and the 200 million, again, we incrementally get higher. We have a fade on the back end as existing bonds get paid off. And again, we're looking at about a $21 billion tax base to absorb a $105 million budget on a go-forward basis, with again, only the light blue and the light green going to come into play here in the next three months or so. So, that's what it looks like. You stack one on top of the other. It looks real easy, and we just continue forward. Schedule of events. Again, we met with the administration to talk about the status of construction and outlook for bond capacity. To be fair, normally, we're the ones using caution of saying, you know, "I don't want to get too far out. I don't want to get too far out." And now I think it's time that we're kind of letting go a little bit and saying, "It's time to go as fast as you can, as fast as you can keep up and move forward." So, that's kind of where we are. We went through the numbers with the Finance Committee in detail. We're here tonight to review the Plan of Finance. We're seeking adoption of the two orders authorizing the issuance of the fixed-rate and adjustable-rate bonds. From here, we will visit with the credit rating agencies again at the end of May. We'll look at locking in interest rates in the first part of June. The documents will go to the Attorney General's Office for their review and approval, and we'll close it sometime right after July 4th. The money will go into the bank, supplementing the construction funds that are already in there from prior bond issues, and keep the cash flow going for a minimum of the next 12 months. So, here are the form of motions. You may have those at your station as well. There are two tonight, one for the fixed rate, one for the adjustable rate as a financing tool. With that, I'll answer any questions that you may have regarding any of the slides.
Thank you. Any questions for Doug? Okay, well, I think we do need a motion. Is that going to be?
And so, as Mr. Witt mentioned, we do have two. I move to adopt an order authorizing the issuance of adjustable-rate school-building bonds, establishing the perimeters for the sale of bonds and delegating authority to the administration to approve the sale and execute the final documents.
All right, that's a motion. We need a second?
I'll second.
Thank you, Bill. All in favor? All right, they passed?
The second one, I move to adopt an order authorizing the issuance of fixed-rate school-building bonds, establishing the perimeters for the sale of bonds and delegating authority to the administration to approve the sale and execute the final documents.
All right, another motion, second? Thank you, Kelly. All in favor? There we go. Thank you very much.
Thank you, Mr. Witt.
Thank you, Doug. All right. Dr. Penn?
Yes, Dr. Penn is up.
All right, thank you. Good evening. Tonight, we have our financial presentation for the fiscal year through April 30th, 2022. Begin with our portfolio presented by funds. So, there's 138.7 million in our bond fund. Obviously, as Mr. Witt just described, once that sale closes, this would be the fund that would increase, um, those to help us continue on with the construction, all the construction projects that we have going. We have 173 million in our general fund at the current time. Under that, that interest and sinking line, that 39, that is made up from the payments that we still have to do this coming year and the fund balance that Mr. Witt was just describing. So, just to kind of connect those, connect those two. That's bringing the total portfolio to 300, just a little under 360 million for all of our funds combined. Looking at our general fund, so again, all of the, all the taxes are in to date. We still have about 40% of our state payments outstanding. Those will continue to roll in through the end of the year in August, and then we'll have some settle up in September this year. After the six, six weeks ends, and we get our final attendance numbers, we'll have a really good idea of where this year's going to end financially for us. So, but definitely on track to exceed our budget of revenue. So, everything's going very strongly. Our payroll cost currently at 68% to date, and then the total expenses at 66, 66%. We will, next month, be the first budget workshop where we'll start discussing these numbers for next year. So, we're heavy involved in planning for next year already as we kind of begin to start wrapping up this year financially. So, we'll start bringing in early revenue and expense projections for, for next year in June. Our athletic fund is, again, this one will slow over the summer, but our revenue is at 740,000 to date with 384,000 expenses, so a surplus of 355. Again, this will slow over the summer. It'll be pretty, pretty stable, not a whole lot happening over the summer. And then we'll see some more in August. Food service, 7.2 million revenue to date and a little over 7 million in expenses. Once we get our main numbers, again, this will be very stable. We are on a meal equivalency rate, meaning we are only charged per meal that we serve. That's where our food service contract works. So, we will, we'll get our main numbers, and then we'll be very, very minimal action on this first year with Aramark on this contract. And so, pleased to see that they've supported themselves on the program and good feedback from Dr. Bradley and working with that program as well. But that is 152 surplus on, on food service to date. So, pleased with the way that program is performing. Debt service, again, all of the tax collections just about in on that. This, the expenses still outstanding, this '23 for the August. This will not be impacted by the bond sale, just to prove. That will not impact us till next year's, next year's budget. So, that will not affect, not affect this one. Construction hall entry will, it is about 85 expenses in with 14% still remaining. This will continue to wind down as we get ready to open it up in August, and there'll be a little bit of kind of punch-out, close-out costs. And then we'll add some new ones on there. So, one will fall off, and we'll put a few more on there. That's how that project is tracking. And then, High School 3, glad to see that here ahead of schedule and on, on pace financially, nothing, nothing sticking out there with 121 still remaining on that contract.
Right.
And that concludes this month's presentation of the financials, unless there's any questions.
Any questions for Dr. Penn?
Also, I want to thank the Finance Committee for all their work with Doug Witt, too. Thank you for taking time out, so.
Very much. We need a motion to approve the Financial Investment Tax Report for April 2022.
I'll make a motion to approve.
All right, Deb, thank you. Got a second? Thank you, Kelly. All in favor? Everybody, but no Jana.
Dr. Bradley's going to come up to speak about Elementary Number 17.
All the money that I need from Doug. All right, to continue on, just want to talk to you tonight about the proposal for Elementary 17. And just as a reminder, I think it's always good to share with, I know we looked at the enrollment earlier, but a question we get often about the growth, you know, is the growth continuing? This is the, this last 12 months has been the fastest growth we've ever experienced in Prosper ISD by over 20%. So, we had never grown more than 2,500 kids in a 12-month period, and we've grown almost 3,000 kids in a 12-month period. And so, the rate increased. So, we're here to talk about another elementary to open in August of '23. And just by other way of note, I wanted you to know a couple of, had a couple of questions, because a few more have arrived. But even with all of the construction that we are doing, right now, in August, we will have 120 portable classrooms in Prosper ISD. So, that's roughly the equivalent of three elementaries in portable classrooms. So, even with the immense amount of work that we have done and construction you have authorized, we are still, you know, chasing that growth. And certainly Doug spoke to that earlier. And so, last Wednesday, we accepted bids to construct Elementary 17 in Sutton Fields, in northwest corner of our district. This is the fastest-growing neighborhood in our district. It's really not even close at this point. Bryant Elementary opened with about 500 kids, and there's a few more than that now. And so, it's a very fast-growth area for us, and we have a site there in that. And so, on Wednesday, we accepted bids. We had two contractors submit bids, Core Construction and Pogue Construction. And you have the score sheet in front of you. And based on the criteria that the board has given us to evaluate, the recommendation is Pogue Construction. We're basing this on what we think will be about a 30 million, I mean, the way things have been going, 31, 32 million dollar elementary. And Pogue submitted a 0.9% interest, or rate for managing the construction fee and a $2,000 pre-construction service fee. And so, that was the best rate that was submitted. And clearly, we have a lot of experience with this company, and, and there are some, I mean, in this market, none of us are immune to some shortages and supply chain issues. This elementary designed by Huckabee, you know, that we, we use a similar floor plan at all of our elementaries, but even the facade on this building in 16 that's going in Liliana will be similar. And so, we're recommending Pogue Construction to you tonight and feel that duplicating the order in a lot of sense, a lot of ways makes sense in this moment. And so, we're seeking approval so we can start as soon as possible. So, with that, I'll, I'll answer any questions the board has, or I will turn it over to Mr. Pogue, Mr. Colquitt, and Mr. Blitzer are here tonight as well.
Fabulous. I can't remember, has Core submitted a bid before? Or is this their first time?
Yes.
Okay.
No, they have submitted a couple of occasions.
Okay.
They, they do a lot of work south of us. They relocated their corporate headquarters to Frisco just a couple of years, and so, we're very familiar with them.
Okay. Great.
So, and you said, because of the growth, 16 and 17 are now opening at the same time?
Yes, ma'am.
So, they'll be built.
Yes, they would break ground in there to open in August of '23, along with the Early Childhood Center. So, this will give us five simultaneous construction projects by the end of June, as Middle School 5 is breaking ground as well.
And we did Hall for 25 million, right?
Yes.
Yes, ma'am. Yes, ma'am.
All right, other questions for Dr. Bradley? All right, we've all had the information in our packet, but we will entertain a motion for item number 10D, Construction Manager at Risk Contract for Elementary Number 17.
Make a motion that we award the bid to Pogue.
All right, thank you, Bill. Second? Thank you, Jana. All in favor? All right. Okay, we need to move up 13A and B. These are items discussed typically in, later in our executive session, but we did that earlier. So, we've looked at the approval of professional contract personnel to be employed and also resignations received. So, let's do 13A. Can I get a motion for that, please?
I'll make the motion.
Thank you, Drew. Second?
Second.
Thank you, Bill. All in favor? All right, resignations, please.
I make a motion.
Thank you, Deb.
I'll second.
Thank you, Deana. All in favor? Great. Okay, there we see, we'll do later. All right, we canvass now?
Yes, sir.
Okay. This is, do we have any other material for this, or this is just the, this is it? Okay.
Now, we'll have the official count. We just received that today from Colin in Denton, and so, we will have that on record. They just got that information today.
Okay.
But we have to have, I think we have until the 18th to get this canvassed, so we're running tight on the timeline.
Okay.
So, it's, what, 11 days?
Hmm, something like that.
Yeah. So, this is basically the school board just agreeing with the results from the election. So, we will go ahead and entertain a motion to canvass the May 7th, 2022 Prosper ISD Board of Trustees election?
I'll make a motion.
Deana?
I'll second.
Thank you, Jana. All in favor? Great. So, I want to congratulate Kelly Cavender for being, for staying, keeping his seat on the board. Also, obviously, for Garrett Linker. I saw, there he is. There he is, in Jordan Dyle. So, congratulations to all of you. Very excited to have you up here in a few minutes, actually. I also want to thank the candidates that ran. I'm so grateful for Kristen Meyer and Lane Chanley, Lanford Rogers, and Carrie Antwine that spent the time and the energy to, and the willingness to serve our district. And I hope that there will be future opportunities for those people to serve, whether at the district, whether at the board level or other places in the district. We're very grateful. It is no small effort to, to put forth a campaign and put your name out there. So grateful for them.
So, at this time, we will ask Ms. Thompson to take a long walk.
You have to take your things, I think.
Hang on, just a minute.
Hold on, before you walk.
We're going to talk about the auditor engagement letter.
Yeah, and we got to do, we got to do F.
Just kidding.
F and G. We do F and G. Okay.
Dr. Penn, is there anything that you would like to add about? I know our Subfinance Committee did interviews, talking to our different auditors that came within interest. Anything you'd like to add about the engagement letter?
Not, not about the, the letter particularly, just receive a financial audit each year. We did issue a request for qualifications. District team narrowed to finalists, and then they met with the Finance Committee, who ultimately selected Hankins, Eastapp, Denton, Ton, and C for the '21, '22 fiscal year audit. If you improve the engagement letter tonight, they'll be out here this summer, beginning fieldwork to do the budget for this fiscal year in.
All right, any questions on that? If not, we'll need a motion.
I'll make a motion.
Thank you, Mr. Cavender. Second?
I'll second.
Mr. Wilber.
Mr. Wilber. All in favor? Six of us.
Preparing for the walk.
And we have a consideration and possible approval on some lease space for additional administration space. This property is located over at Prosper Town Square. We are out of rooms in this building, but yet we are still growing. And so, this building continues to try to hold. And so this building continues to try to hold us, but doesn't hold us. Parking's an issue, office space. Dr. Bradley's done an excellent job of making every square foot a cubicle or a place for someone to work. So we are at the place that we don't really want to purchase any more property because we obviously need an administration building. But we felt like that bringing a lease opportunity to you and then it being centrally located made it a prime location for some of our staff. It'll house probably 25 to 30 employees, depending on what we, magic, Dr. Bradley can work. And so it is, we'll have people over there that it's not going to be kind of a typical flow for parents really coming in. It's more like curriculum people who need a place to land to be able to get their work done. And so we'll have them housed over there, which will free up some space in this building and then also parking. That is a true concern for us. It's about 2,500 square feet that this space will provide us.
And if I'm understanding this lease agreement correctly, it's a five-year lease? Is that what it is?
Yes.
Okay.
Because we do not see any time in the near future with our needs that Dr. Bradley just explained with the 120 portables, that it would be a good idea to start building an administration building when we have kids sitting in portables, although the need is there.
Will this get anyone out of portables or no?
Yes, but we're not moving the portables.
Okay.
Because we'll still need the space. So it's actually, we'll probably take the elementary curriculum team that are located over here on the south side of the building. And it'll allow us to use that space for other office spaces.
Okay.
Do we have the space full day one, essentially?
Here?
No, I mean over there, this lease space.
Yes.
Yeah, okay.
Yes. The great thing about this property is that we could expand if needed potentially into the future. But right now, we want to just bring this lease to you to see kind of how this agreement works out. But not bind us to a purchase.
Right, other questions on 10G? Right, if not, we'll entertain a motion for the consideration of possible approval of lease of additional administrative space at Prosper Town Center.
Are we essentially authorizing someone to sign the lease? Is that what we're essentially doing?
Yes.
Okay.
I'll make the motion.
You got the motion. Drew's got the motion. Second? Jana, all in favor? Perfect. Now you can make.
Now.
You're first. You've been here longer as far as an educator.
No music.
It's playing. You can't hear it?
Well played, your real play.
Ready to go and speed up. So Ms. Thompson has served Prosper ISD in the most exemplary way, not only as an educator and a leader in this district, but then continued her service once she had retired to step forward on the Prosper School Board. And we cannot thank you enough for all of the great years that you have given to this place. As I was saying earlier with our retirees, we are where we are because of them. But a huge piece and a very pivotal turning point in Prosper ISD is when Jana Thompson took the principal job at Rucker Elementary. The academic level went up tremendously and teacher training, support, parent support, students being known and valued, it was a game changer for this district. And so I want to thank you so much for your service because that has been your legacy and the way that you have handled each and every moment, whether you were serving on the Prosper ISD School Board or serving as an educator in this district. We have a few things that we'd like to honor you with tonight. So this, oh my goodness, yes, it's team effort. Lee, come on.
This is my husband, Lee. This is like a new cat.
Well, kind of. So this is thanking you for your dedication and service to our students, family, staff and community from 2016 to 2022, loyally serving for six years on the Prosper ISD School Board. So thank you very much. Another thing that we wanted to give you, and we felt it was only appropriate that this journal says she's unstoppable. It's an inspirational journal and you will find in here notes of encouragement, but also of appreciation for your dedication and service to Prosper ISD. So thank you so much. We're excited that Ms. Thompson will continue to serve through the Prosper Education Foundation because she was just named to the board on Friday. So she will, she just won't leave this place. So continue to give to the kids and the community. And Mr. Thompson, we want to also thank you, you know, that it takes a team effort because the job of a school board member is never easy. And so we know there's a lot of support at home to help when those tough moments come. So thank you so much for your support and dedication to Prosper ISD through Jana's leadership. Thank you.
You have no idea. Back in, when it was in 1997, when I first arrived in Prosper, I needed, I was at a point in my life where I really needed a change professionally, personally, all of it. I know many of you in this room have had those same situations. And when I first arrived in Prosper, I don't know, it was just I found home. And I commuted to Prosper from North Great Mine for six and a half years before Toll Road. It was work every minute. And then when I was offered a constableship in another, in our community where we lived, which would have been about a 15-minute drive from our home, I just couldn't do it because as soon as I started my work in Prosper and worked with the students and families and the staff, and many of you in this room were with me all along that journey, whether we worked together to, you know, I feel so honored to have helped you raise your children. And many of you were teachers. We were, you know, teachers, educators together, all pulling in the same direction, all working together for one thing, that was for our kids, all of us. And when I see those of you that have taught and you also had a dream to become an administrator and I had a part in that, I am so blessed that I was part of your journey also. And I cannot stop because this town and this ISD is definitely in my heart forever. So I really thank all of you.
We will now ask Mr. Bridges to make the long walk. And Mrs. Bridges, if you will come join us.
Jana took all the words.
But I have some for you. So in 2018, we had a superintendent who was hit by a car. And immediately, things changed in this district. None of us knew what the destiny would be. Our school board president at that time, Daniel Jones, had stepped down from being the president. And a few weeks later, the accident with Dr. Watkins occurred. Mr. Bridges had been named as the president of the school board. And I very quickly was named acting superintendent because we didn't know what that would be. And from that moment, I knew of his steadfast leadership, his professionalism, his love for this district was immense. Because to come in at one of the most turbulent times when you don't know if you're going to have a superintendent who returns, he gladly stepped in with grace and he served at the highest level. He's continued to do that for the last 12 and a half years in Prosper ISD. And most recently, over the last two years that have been extremely difficult in school boards across this nation. And then right here at home in Prosper ISD, he has led with dignity and grace and professionalism in every single way, shape and form. And so we want to thank you so much, Mr. Bridges. It has truly been my honor as a first-time superintendent to have you as my right hand, right beside me, helping me through this journey to take care of this great district. I just want to say thank you for your leadership. Absolutely outstanding work that you've done. And to Sally, his beautiful wife, again, standing steadfast behind at home, making sure that he has the support that he needs and sometimes sticky notes to remind him where he is to. Because she helps with that as well. We appreciate that. So we have him arrive at this. We want to honor you as well. We want to give Sally some beautiful flowers to take home and honor you. But we have a journal that we also, and only appropriate that one of the words on this journal would say Prosper. So we know that there are great plans for you. And the one thing that I know about Mr. Bridges over all of these years, it always seems as though he's retiring, but yet he gets pulled back into something else. And so it never really has happened. And I have a feeling that we might pull you back into something here in the ISD possibly. So we've written some nice notes of appreciation and hopefully you will enjoy those.
Thank you very much.
And then also this beautiful award that I know will be probably displayed on your mat.
Thanks, everybody. It's been a real honor and privilege in my life to be able to play this role in Prosper ISD. I came to this district in December 2009 as a board member. I think you've lived here for 17 years, so our kids went through Prosper ISD as well. When I came to the board, I went back and look at it today. The, we had five schools and our enrollment was 3,700 kids. We added about almost 3,700 kids last year, I just pointed out. So a lot of changes happened and it continues to accelerate more and more and more and more. So it's been my honor and privilege to be part of this board, to work with this group of people and the other trustees that I've served with. And I guess if I had to leave any, any parting words to my board colleagues and to our new board members, I'm so glad that you're going to be up here, here in a few minutes. I think really focusing on what, what, what we've had all along in Prosper, which is children first. And every decision that we make, we hold up against that, that, that idea, that rubric of how do we serve kids best? And there's so many things that can get in the way of that. We have politics or emotion or the latest news or whatever else. There's so many distractions that can come along. But as long as we hold children first, I think we're always going to be in a good place. I think that's what's blessed Prosper as much as it, as it has over the years. Then I'm going to say the second thing about it, it's hard for your school board to know everything that we need to know to put kids first. And that's why we have this wonderful administration. All of the people here in this room that serve Prosper ISD, administrators, teachers, staff. I think our board needs to continue to support and uphold and encourage and pray, prod, to make sure that they keep doing the best that they can do and that they have as much freedom as they can to keep kids first. And I think as long as we do that, great days are ahead. I was texting David Bristol. I was texting him today. And I said, for both the town and for the district, I think our best days are ahead. So thank you all very much.
Okay, we are now going to swear in our new members, Jordan Dial. We will begin with a place one. We'd like to bring your family with you. Apparently, and please come join us. Ms. McFurry will swear in. In the name and by the authority of the state of Texas.
In the name and by the authority of the state of Texas.
I, Jordan Dial, do solemnly swear.
I, Jordan Dial, do solemnly swear.
That I will faithfully execute the duties.
That I will faithfully execute the duties.
Of the office of Prosper Independent School District School Board Trustee.
Of the office of the Prosper Independent School District, School District School Board Trustee.
Of the state of Texas.
Of the state of Texas.
And will to the best of my ability.
And will to the best of my ability.
Reserve, protect and defend the Constitution.
Reserve, protect and defend the Constitution.
And laws of the United States.
And laws of the United States.
And of this state.
And of this state.
So help me God.
So help me God.
Okay, Mr. Dial, pot seat. Okay, and then in place three, we will have Mr. Cavender come around and have his family come and join us. Please swear in. In the name and by the authority of the state of Texas.
In the name and by the authority of the state of Texas.
I, Kelly Cavender, do solemnly swear.
I, Kelly Cavender, do solemnly swear.
That I will faithfully execute the duties.
That I will faithfully execute the duties.
Of the office of Prosper Independent School District School Board Trustee.
Of the office of Prosper Independent School District School Board Trustee.
Of the state of Texas.
Of the state of Texas.
And will to the best of my ability.
And will to the best of my ability.
Reserve, protect and defend the Constitution.
Reserve, protect and defend the Constitution.
And the laws of the United States.
And the laws of the United States.
And of this state.
And of this state.
So help me God.
So help me God.
Congratulations. See, it should still be one. All right, in place six, Garrett Linker. You'll have your family come up. I see one is out.
He's out.
It's bedtime? Garrett, you want your mom to come here? Oh, so sorry. In the name and by the authority of the state of Texas.
In the name and by the authority of the state of Texas.
I, Garrett Linker, do solemnly swear.
I, Garrett Linker, do solemnly swear.
That I will faithfully execute the duties.
That I will faithfully execute the duties.
Of the office of Prosper Independent School District School Board Trustee.
The office of Prosper Independent School District School Board Trustee.
Of the state of Texas.
Of the state of Texas.
And will to the best of my ability.
And will to the best of my ability.
Reserve, protect and defend the Constitution.
Reserve, protect and defend the Constitution.
And laws of the United States.
And laws of the United States.
And of this state, so help me God.
And of this state, so help me God.
That was fun for the wedding. All right, you get to go home and do this. But you, my friend, get to go take a walk. Welcome to you both and welcome back.
Yeah. So gentlemen, officially to both of y'all, welcome. Mr. Cavender, welcome again. So one more time, congratulations to you three gentlemen. All right, going back to the business side of things, we now have public comments. And we've got four people signed up tonight. So I will read our public comment guidelines. The board encourages public comment. All public comments at a regularly scheduled meeting should be limited to school district governance and operations. All public comments at a meeting other than a regularly scheduled meeting should be limited to agenda items posted for this meeting. Please note that the board will hear public comments in two parts. During the first part of the meeting, the board will hear comments directly related to agenda items. The board will then hear other comments during the last part of the meeting. Both public comments time will count towards the total public comment time allotted for this meeting. All speakers will be limited to no more than three minutes and a total of 30 minutes has been allotted for public comment. Additionally, if there are five or more speakers, there are not, because there's only four signed up tonight. If you have a specific concern related to an employee of the district or a specific student issue, you are encouraged to utilize the district's government, governance procedures provided in board policies, DGBA local, FNG local and GF local, or applicable grievances processes. Finally, remember that the board may not discuss or act upon any issues that are not properly posted on the agenda and may choose to address comments made related to an agenda item. At this time, the agenda item is discussed in the meeting. The Board of Trustees appreciates your active participation in the school district. So we'll set this for three minutes. You've got time.
Before we get started.
Yes, ma'am.
I believe Natalie Huddleston is also here tonight. Natalie, is she here? Okay. She also ran for school board, so I didn't see her in the crowd, but I didn't know if she was back there and maybe slipped in. So I just didn't want to get her as one of our candidates.
Yeah, perfect. Thank you. Thank you to her for running. First up this evening is Mrs. Ewen.
Hi. I literally just came up to see if you'd get my name right, since this is like my fourth time speaking this year.
How'd that do?
So I was hoping Mr. Bridges would get a chance on the fourth try to get it right. But I just want to say congratulations to everyone. I enjoyed getting to know the candidates during the election season, and thank you for listening to all of my concerns this year, and I look forward to continuing my relationship working with you guys. So congratulate.
Thank you so much, Ms. Ewing. Next up is Mr. Pope.
Well, first of all, congratulations to Jordan and Garrett. Garrett's, I feel like a proud father with Garrett, but that's a whole other story. And also, Mr. Cavender, for being reelected. You know, I learned a lot during this election about myself, about people on the board that I didn't know, and people that I thought I knew that I really didn't. There's a lot of things that we can do together. There's a lot of things we can do more than just talk. Sometimes you need to talk to talk, but you need to walk the walk. And one of the things I plan on doing is doing that this year. And I've spoken to some of the people in the district about Hope Squad interacting with the SPED program. Because the way I understand it is it's an, for seniors, they're allowed to, it's a, trying to word the word, I just, where they can sign up for it. Okay, I can't think of the word. But anyways, thank you, elective. And also, the other thing I'm looking at is, I put this on here so that I would say it correctly. My apologies. Watch dogs. I think I'm going to get involved in that as well. I think it's needed for a perspective of a parent that talks a lot to actually see what's going on before he comes to a conclusion. So I've learned a lot myself this year, and I'm hoping that this board will listen more, and I think they have been, to the community and continue to do that. There are some people in the audience that I didn't really know beforehand, one of the ones was just up here, that we may have some differences, but there's a lot of things we have in common as well. So Prosper is a great place to live, 3,700 students that came here for a reason. So the goal of every parent and everybody in this community and this board and the district is to keep it that way. So thank you very much.
Thank you, Mr. Pope. Next up, we have Mrs. Reeser.
You did this so much better than me, James. But I just want to say, everybody that ran, it's not an easy thing to get up and put yourself out like that, and I appreciate everybody that did. I want to congratulate Garrett, Jordan, and Kelly. I also was out with the candidates a lot, volunteering my time, and I got to meet and talk to people who I might have had a misconception about. And it was a really rewarding experience for me, and I'm really glad to get to know a lot of you a lot better. And I think that our board is much stronger today, and it's a nice, accurate depiction of the people who live in this community, which is really cool. I got to meet people like Katie Ewing, who I probably also had preconceived notions about. And she's pretty cool, and I like her. I think that things got really ugly. I came here in 2019. I chose Prosper ISD, why I bought the house that I bought. And I was really happy about that. And then COVID hit, and things got really crazy. And so I'm really glad to see that things are getting back to normal in our community. I'm glad that parents are able to come back into the school again. I'm also really excited about the watchdog program in the high school, because, you know, everybody's involved in elementary school. You can't keep parents out. And then it falls off dramatically in middle school, and then we're pretty much nonexistent once they get to high school. And I would like to see more people please come out and volunteer for the high school because those kids need us too, just in a little bit of a different way. They don't need bake sales, but they do need us in their lives, and they need good, strong role models. And everybody sitting up there, I think, is one of those kind of people, which is why all of us chose to come to this community. But don't forget, there's some really great parents out there too, and we want to be included. So I'm looking forward to the future. And I'd like to apologize if I ever came off abrasive or mean, because that was never my intent. My intent is children first, just like you. Thank you.
Thank you, Mrs. Reeser. And then last, Mrs. Bolowski, I hope I say it correctly. I didn't. I apologize. Please say it for, Bukowski.
That's all right. It's Polish. I did the same thing when I first encountered that name. I just want to say congratulations to those of you who ran and those of you who won your seats. I want to echo the comments of some of the other members of our community. Even when we have a difference in this community, I hope we can continue to dialogue and work together to come to solutions that honor the state constitution and the laws of this state and the family values that many of us hold, even when they're different. It's important that we demonstrate for our children, and in a very polarized world, that even when we disagree, we can continue to dialogue and find common ground and work together. I know everybody is very tired of the topic of books, but I do look forward to hearing the remainder of the outcomes for the books that are still under review. And you'll probably be getting some more information from us as there just are a number of titles that are still problematic. I'd love to see a little bit more transparency in terms of who's sitting on those review committees and how those books are being reviewed and what the timelines are, because there are a number of books that have been sitting for months and months and months with no answer. And so I hope we can come to, you know, some transparency on those issues. And I appreciate what you do as a school board. I hope that, you know, just because we do have differences, it won't keep us from working together. Thank you very much.
Thank you, ma'am. Hang on, hang on. Yeah, one student. Okay. Or two other people here. We're going to go ahead and give them the chance to speak. Let's see here. Ms. Thomas? Yeah, come on up.
Hi. All right. Good evening, everyone. My name is Alexandra Thomas. And before I begin, I just wanted to thank all of you guys for giving me the opportunity to share my concerns with the board. I have been a French language student in Prosper ISD for the past three years. And becoming fluent in French has been one of my biggest aspirations for many years, especially because I plan to study international relations in college and develop a global perspective through language learning. As I speak to you this evening, the only opportunity for me to continue with my studies in the French language at Rock Hill High School is through a completely asynchronous online course that is self-paced. I am extremely grateful that the district has offered to provide this course for us as my classmate Pranita and I were initially told that we wouldn't be able to take AP French IV at all. However, there are serious issues with this model of learning that are essential to consider when building a world language program with fluency as its end goal. From my experience of taking both French I and French II through proximity learning, the online learning model is not engaging by any means and does not factor in the importance of comprehension. Learning a lesson, completing the assignment, and then moving on does not give students the opportunity to, one, commit the vocabulary and grammar rules to memory, and, two, apply the knowledge to conversations and verbal communication. With this in mind, proximity learning is severely subpar in comparison to the brilliant quality of education that Prosper ISD is capable of. I understand that it seems unrealistic to offer a course when only two students are enrolled, but my classmate, my classmate Pranita and I will, my classmate Pranita will discuss in her comment that there is a solution. And before I go, I ask you to consider the purpose of a world language curriculum in Prosper ISD. Is it to prepare students to be global citizens and learn languages in order to immerse them in different perspectives? Or is it for students to obtain a two-year credit? Are students required to do their homework to become fluent or have graded busy work? I'm truly thankful for the language education that I've received over the past three years, especially in French III, where my incredible teacher, Madame Fernet, has helped me grow and expand on my fluency at an exponential rate. Thank you guys so much for your time and consideration.
Thank you. Pranita, I am, can you pronounce your last name for me? Because I know I will butcher it.
Yeah, it's called Magovishu.
Okay, I would have been way off there, so thank you.
So as Alex mentioned, the alternatives provided for French IV are not as effective as learning the language in the presence of an actual teacher. But what I want to do right now is propose a few solutions that I feel are possible to implement. So one of the reasons given against stacking of classes, which is basically putting multiple levels of the same subject into one class, was that it reduces teacher engagement with the students. But the alternative was proximity learning, which we feel goes in the opposite direction of what was intended for the curriculum. So in the case of, in this case, both the teacher and the minority students of the proposed class, Alex and myself, affirm the benefits of stacking. Madame Fernet isn't getting directly involved, and she feels it isn't her place to do so. But as her students, we can vouch for her teaching methods. This year, we're in a class that includes French III, IV, and V in the same class period. Madame Fernet is still able to put in the equal amount of work into each of her classes and students, incorporating the learning materials for each class to involve all students in the room, thus improving our French comprehension and speaking skills. After teaching our class throughout this year, she knows how to make, work her way around the obstacles that stacking may pose, and in fact, uses the model to make our classes more interactive. For me personally, this was the best French education I've received in the past three years of taking this language. Since Madame Fernet is so skilled at teaching multiple classes at one time, I don't believe that our learning would be hindered by stacking classes. We have worked so hard to reach this level of language learning, and after coming so far, it would be really disappointing if we weren't able to finish off with this successful French IV class. So all we're asking you right now is to make one exception this time, to let there be a stacking of classes so that we can receive the education we believe we're entitled to. Thank you so much.
Thank you both. And both of you ladies, awesome job. We commend y'all for that. It's not easy to come up and address the board, but y'all did outstanding this evening. So thank y'all. Okay, we will now retreat into executive session, so I will need a motion for that.
I'll make a motion.
Ms. Smith?
Let Kelly have it.
And then, okay, there we go. We got that. All in favor? That's all of us? And, okay, we will come back out when we're done. Thank y'all so much for coming this evening. Back into meeting. It is 10:23. Matter before us is a selection of officers for this next year, so is there a motion?
I make a motion to nominate Drew Wilborn for president, Deborah Smith for vice president, and Kelly Cavender for secretary.
All right. Do we have a second?
A second.
All right. All in favor? Six, all oppose? That's all of us. All right. I will now, ma'am, yes, motion to adjourn?
I'll make the motion to adjourn.
Thank you.
I'll second.
Second. And everybody, favor? That's all of us. Have a good evening.
Okay, y'all too.